We're going to open the meeting of April 8th. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. All right. We have an appointment with Doreen Lipka to talk about the lighting at the highway facilities. What do you got there, Dave?
I just made up a letter about what we've done so far trying to remedy the situation. Also, there's a map on the back which is somewhat hand drawn that I recorded. The candle power and all the lights and different distances from the light poles and distances off the building and the distance actually right along the property line on West Street at 111 West Street.
So this you mean 111?
Well, yeah. This is the road. So if you look at this drawing, if you come off the building 72 feet, that's where the light poles are across the parking lot closest to Mrs. Lipka's property. At the base of the light poles, the numbers, the round dots of the light poles, the number is the candle foot power, whatever measurement that is, but that's what we use for our measurement, I guess. So that number is directly under the light. I measured 30 feet forward. That number's written down there. I measured 30 feet back and I measured the candle foot at the top of the slope.
Okay.
And I went across the street and measured. The only reading I could get is at the end of our driveway across the road and I could not get any reading walking down the property line on West Street.
And what is the power that you can have?
.2.
Okay. Yeah.
The town bylaw is .2 foot candles at the property line and I didn't get any reading at the property line.
You didn't go in her bedroom, though, right?
No.
I should've said in the living room.
Yeah, that's on camera.
The living room and bedroom.
Right.
So the issue here, I think, is not, I think it's about being a good neighbor versus rules and regulations about what's permissible and what's not, right? So my folks have been great neighbors to the town of Berlin while this has been built. Numerous tractor trailers have turned around in her driveway. The town has not offered to fix any of the non-pavement on her driveway. There was dust and sand blown in her windows or house. We couldn't paint the house for three years, two years while this was being done, you know. So we've been good neighbors and the problem is now that, you know, all she wants is, her bedroom is on the left end, the living room is in the middle, and there's an entryway porch to the right. The porch, nobody cares about, nobody's in there unless somebody comes in. The living room, there's a wall on the back wall. The light comes through the big triple window in the front and hits that back wall when her lights are out. Same in her bedroom. Her bed faces the interior of the house. There's a wall. There's lights across her wallpaper. So when she lays down and goes to sleep, she sees lights across the wall. So the issue, I don't think, is are we complying with the legal limits of the lighting? I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is, does the town of Berlin want to be good neighbors, right, and remedy the problem? So the way I see it is we have multiple options. So number one, we have to find out if we want to be good neighbors. Number two, we need a temporary solution to stop the craziness now and then we need a permanent solution. And if the temporary and the permanent are the same solution, that's great. So we're suggesting that you shut the lights off across the front on the high poles for now until you come up with a permanent solution that maybe the town likes and that doesn't provide lighting into my mother's house. So that's what I suggest and I'm open for comment and concerns.
Unfortunately, I don't think that's possible. The occupancy permit for the building is based on the parking lot being lit with those lights. I did talk to the building inspector. You can't shut those lights off. It's part of the occupancy permit.
Can we drop the poles down?
I don't think you can do that either because the, how the parking lot is lit, it follows certain regulations was my understanding. It's also not going to probably help because the light that you're getting, my guess is it's reflected light because the lights actually, they're designed to shine down, not out. So those lights aren't actually shining out. What's happening is they bounce off the pavement and then you get a glow. So I'm not sure that shortening them would fix it. I doubt it would. I think you'd still get that bounced up reflection off of the building and the pavement. That's just the nature of light.
So where are we at?
Is there anything we can do to the pavement?
I think the light is not necessarily, well, maybe it is bouncing off the pavement but also being reflected off the building. It's just, it's ambient light that's illuminating the property that it wasn't there before. It's different. And she's lived there her whole life and doesn't necessarily agree with what's going on, the change. That's, I mean, I've tried. I shut the light off that was allegedly blocking or shining into her, into her house and she told me it didn't help. And so I turned it back on. And the next time she came in, she said it was the lights from inside the building that were shining into the windows. So I informed her, the next time the lights are on in the building, call the police because nobody should be there.
Well, I wonder if those were the lights on the buildings that she mistook for being in the building?
You know, I measured the lights on the building as well. There's only two on the front. They're down to the right side facing the property and those are the numbers that you see on the building. I mean, short of shutting the lights off, I don't see that there's a solution to this.
So let me ask you this. I'm here in town till Wednesday. Can we shut the lights off just today and tomorrow and let me look inside her house where to see? I don't care if you come for 15 minutes and shut them down and let me look and then you put them back on.
But you're saying we can't shut them off?
I don't think we can shut them off.
Can we shut any off?
I don't think so.
If you're gonna...
I think it's part of the occupancy permit.
No, no, no. I mean, for a test. Can we shut them off for a test?
I know, but even that, it's not going to help because we still have to keep, I mean, we have, we can't take the lights away. So it's not like we can permanently shut them off if it fixes the problem.
So I have a question. If the lights along the front, along West Street, are turned off, would it still be bright enough to see the drive for what Lisa's talking about?
So right now, I experimented with this already. The building lights and the light poles are on the same circuit. So when I shut it off, everything goes out. There's only one emergency light that stays illuminated over the entryway. So without getting an electrician in there to separate those circuits, it's not...
And you can't have all of them?
Right. If I shut the circuit off, everything goes out.
So if you're going to shut off the outside along West Street, if you shut those, what, three lights off?
Three lights. There's actually five. There's one on each end of the building that, but they're around the corner of the building.
Yes.
There's three across the front, two...
I'm just talking about the ones along...
They're all on the same circuit.
And so what other lights would go off besides those?
There's two lights that are on the building and there's either two or three lights underneath a mezzanine that goes into the office area. When those lights are shut off, they all go out except for one emergency light gets activated and comes on directly over the entryway. I mean, we know what the result is going to be. There won't be any reflection if we shut the lights off.
Oh, sure. But if you were able to only shut the ones off along West Street, would it be any better?
But are you saying you can't without an electrician coming in?
Right, right. If you were able to.
And I still think you go back to the problem where the occupancy permit says you must light that parking lot in a certain way.
But other parking lots, if you go to other parking lots, they, lights illuminate parking lots without being that high. I mean, I think...
Well, they're high because the elevation is high, though. I mean, the lights are up high because you're up on a slope.
But if you go into like a senior citizen place, you'll see lights that are this high on poles. They're not 15 feet up for those reasons, right?
I can also say the other thing that I found out during this process was those lights for those poles were bought specifically to be hurricane resistant and the pads that they're on are hurricane resistant. So any alterations you do to those also affects our liability as a town because they were specifically purchased to fit certain requirements. So you can't just change them or hack them off without...
And you can't put...
Well, you'd have to have approval of the building inspector, I assume.
I mean, I know you put up tiny street signs, but you're saying that you can't put up bigger street signs because A, it could be safety if it lets go or...
Well, even those should come out because we should not be altering those poles at all.
Can you paint the bottom of those light?
Well, these numbers here show reflected. It's not the light from the light pole. It's not, that light isn't, there's no measurable light at the property line.
I'm going to go back to when Berlin Memorial was built. We had the similar issues. Neighbors across the street did not like all the lighting. We ended up turning off a lot of the lights and now it looks as though some of them are that...
They're orangey.
Orangey. It's not bright light at all. It's just sort of a...
Correct. It's a high pressure sodium so that, it's not an LED. They're not very energy efficient, those type of lights.
Those are actually going to be changed, too. Those are next on the list to be changed, just so you're aware.
Well, I hope they're not going to be brighter. We're going to have some more neighbors in here.
LEDs by their very nature tend to be a little bit brighter.
Maybe we don't change those then. I, I mean, I would have gone with Doreen's suggestion, just turn them off and see what happens, but...
You shut all the lights off so you can't tell if it's the light bouncing off the poles or if it's the light from the buildings that Mrs. Lipka sees?
Right.
You still eliminate, and then you have a totally dark building, which you can't have because you have tons of stuff in there.
And I would also note that Berlin tried really hard with this design to be a good neighbor because those are, they're full cutoff lights that shine down. They're kind of the best case scenario for trying to keep light from going across the street or going and causing a problem. They really are. They tried very hard with that design to be as unobtrusive as possible.
Should have maybe left some...
Trees.
Yeah, maybe we need some more, some, you know, 15-foot abrevites across the front or, I mean, maybe that's what we need.
You're still going to have the glow.
Well, you know, what we could do for now is, I already disconnected this pole once. I can go in there and disconnect that again at the pole and not in the building and I can do the same with this one. I'll leave the one in the middle on. It'll leave the lights on the building and it'll leave the two side lights on.
Can you make sure that before you do that, you check with the building inspector and make sure that that's...
Okay.
Okay.
That'll leave the center light on, just one light in the parking lot.
Okay. Is there three or four in the front?
There's three across the front and one on each side.
Did you put signs on only two of the...
No, all three of them.
And the signs should come down.
Then isn't there...
Yeah, that didn't help at all. I thought they were going all the way down.
There's one that doesn't have a sign on the back of it.
The signs don't matter anyway.
I know, I was just, the count, that was what I was concerned about.
So will you be able to get with the building inspector maybe tomorrow depending upon your schedules?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then maybe...
Do you know for a fact that's 100%?
I know that the occupancy permit, I didn't have a lot of time to go into specifics, but I know that the occupancy permit is based on the parking lot being lit. I'm not sure the extent of it. I don't have the regulations or the...
Well, Richard would know.
So, okay, so that would be proposal A. What do we feel about some 15-foot abrevites or something across the front to deflect some of it?
I'm not against that. I mean, it's considerable expense. I don't know where that's going to come from, but...
And I'm also, I'm not sure, once again, that this is going to solve the problem because you're bouncing up and your elevation is really high there, which is part of what's causing the problem.
But it blocks some of the building light, too.
Fence, like the soundproof fences or the sound barrier fences they put on a highway for the neighbors right behind them. Is that possible?
I don't...
These are all, you need budget.
Oh, I know, I know, but I mean, just, you know, to Doreen's, right, but to Doreen's point, to look at options B, C, and D instead of just turn the lights off, but it impacts the building permit or the building occupancy.
And then we're right back here next week.
Correct.
Right. So I think we have to, when we leave today, have some A, Bs, and Cs. Otherwise, we're just right back to where we are, you know. And I live in Maine, so it's not that convenient for me to come multiple times for the same issue, right? So, but I just, I just want to come up with a solution so an 85-year-old lady can sleep at night, right? And maybe the solution is, maybe you guys give her a budget to put room docketing blinds in her windows, in her bedroom. You know, maybe that's C, right?
I think that's more practical than the other solutions that have been provided.
She won't do that across her living room, though. I guarantee you, she won't put those blinds across her living room.
I'm just saying, the solutions that are being...
Well, although she might put a better looking blind across, but she won't put like an ugly kind of blind. She might put a, like a nice custom roll-down blind in her living room.
There are also blackout curtains. There's such a thing as a blackout curtain.
Yeah, but we don't want to redesign the entire, inside of your mom's house, too.
But, you know, so either maybe a rollout blind and then room docketing for her three-bedroom windows. We could, you know, try that. You know, I'm just coming to the table with some ideas.
Appreciate it.
To help us all, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, if you can talk to Mr. Richard tomorrow, let us know.
All right.
Find out maybe what a potential fence would cost, maybe what trees would cost, and then we all road trip to Lowe's to find out what room docketing blinds cost and figure out length. And then a week, can we do everything in a week? Would you be able to, just for tomorrow night? Actually, tomorrow night would probably be good because it's raining. There'll be tons of stuff bouncing off the lights. Could you just call Mrs. Lipka, say it's dark out now at 7:30 and say we're shutting the lights off for 10 minutes?
Yeah, I'll disconnect the lights during the day because I've got to stick my hands in that light pole and play with wires, so I won't be doing that at night.
Don't turn it during, don't do it during the rain.
And also, I mean, I'm not, I'm not really thrilled with this either.
I know.
I'm not thrilled with him going into the lights. Are you an electrician?
I'm a trained professional.
You can have Henry help you.
Are you an electrician?
Yeah, we're good.
I mean, is Henry Wheeler?
No problem.
Are you an electrician?
No problem. Don't worry about it.
I am worried about it.
I have insurance.
And so does Henry. Call Mr. Wheeler. Okay. All right. So by the end of the week, we'll have options back to you?
That sounds great.
Okay. I'll give you a haul.
I'm all for that. Okay.
Cool.
Thanks, Doreen. All right. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your time. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you.
Thanks, Doreen.
All right, Dave.
We flow into monthly report.
Yeah, indeed.
All right. I'm sure you all read the email I sent, hopefully.
Mm-hmm.
I don't really have any concerns. I think we're done with winter. We've overspent snow and ice, which is a common occurrence, and we're into spring cleanup mode.
Would you mind sending me the person that trained you guys on the salt option rather than, because I have somebody actually over in Fitchburg who is interested in potentially pursuing that.
I will.
Thank you.
Matter of fact, he's coming to town next week. We're doing a chainsaw safety class for two days next week.
Awesome.
And that was a nice comparison that you did about the amount of money that you spent on sand versus stuff.
Well, I know it's only one year into it, but the...
Yet you have your baseline.
Right. But the savings isn't an amount of product used, it's in the amount of product not picked up.
Correct.
And not having to pay somebody to dispose of it.
Perhaps will we.
And my flower garden appreciates you very much.
It's amazing the difference, you know, you start looking at other communities and what they have to pick up.
Oh, I noticed it was, you can see it's...
So are you going to have to do any of that this year?
Yeah, we'll sweep, you know, normal stuff, but...
Yeah, but it won't be all the sand.
No, we put out a thousand ton less, so it's a thousand ton of product we don't have to pick up.
Well, it's a safety thing for all the people now that are out on their bikes. When they're taking corners, they're not going to hit the sand and go...
This benefits, across the board benefits.
Yeah.
Environmentally and financially.
Cool. Appreciate everything and you guys, too. If you could drop the chipper off at my house, that'd be great.
It's all in pieces right now. I have to wait for Fitz to put it back together.
Say hi to the guys.
Okay.
Keep us posted. Thank you for being accommodating for Mrs. Lipka.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Tell the missus we said hi.
I will.
All right. We have minutes to approve. February 4th, the 11th, the 19th, the 20th, the 25th, the 28th, 4-3.
So the only question that I had on them as I was reading through, there was a note about a second session from KP log, one of their three sessions on municipal wording.
Yep.
Is that scheduled? Do we have a target audience? Oh, it's down there. Sorry. Look, I didn't read all the way down. Sorry. Never mind.
Okay.
Question removed.
All right. Did anyone have any questions about the minutes? Questions, comments, edits?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Mary.
So we current now?
No.
Okay, no.
No. March and then you'll be current.
Okay, cool.
Try to step on it, get it done quickly.
Okay. We have an appointment of Pat Jackson, who'd like to be a senior work-off employee. She would be creating a database for enforcement for the building department and ZBA, too. But we had the question come up when Dennis Minich wrote to us and asked about who is going to be responsible for testing wells. And so I think that's what got them thinking that they needed to do this. So...
Just as a comment, too, view permit, I understand, will do this. We just did not buy the package to do it. So that's probably something that we want to at least look at in the future so that it could all be stored.
Could be.
In that one location.
That'd be nice. Can we add, as we go along, for the, where you said we didn't buy it as part of the package? Could we call up tomorrow and be like, hey, we want...
As long as you can, then.
Chris, fork over that credit card, will you? Okay. All right.
All right. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have, it's the American Legion, Berlin American Legion, who would like approval for the Memorial Day Parade, Monday, May 27th, from Berlin Memorial School at 12:45. And in Clement weather, it will be inside Berlin Memorial at 1:00.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I miss the parades of old. We'd start at the cemetery and hoof it down Pleasant and then come up.
I remember those.
Do you remember those?
I was in them.
So was I, as a Girl Scout.
You started at the cemetery? You didn't end there?
No, we started at the cemetery.
The Pleasant Street.
Cemetery on Pleasant Street.
Oh, okay.
And went all the way up Pleasant and then hooked into the center of town and then stopped at the old cemetery.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I was going to say, we did taps down Pleasant.
Yeah, that flag got heavy about halfway down Pleasant Street.
Especially when it was like 80, 85.
Yes.
And it was really, yeah.
Mm-huh.
Yeah.
All right. We have a renewal of the junk dealer's license for Berlin Auto Parts.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The letter.
Oh, yeah. Yes, one thing.
One thing. And we have our annual town meeting preparations, the warrant article, warrant articles, the order, and signing. Tell me...
There's five there.
Yep.
They're all in the same, we need to look at one. Are you guys good with the order or...
I thought the order was pretty standard all the way through.
The only thing I wanted to ask you guys about was that I know that we've got the babysitting set up for the annual town meeting. I'm hearing from the seniors and also from possibly the parents that they might like to have, I guess we won't know how we've defi, well, how have we divided this up, Mary? Just trying to see whether...
Usually citizens petitions go at the end and I note the feedback you got from the seniors and some parents is that they wanted the marijuana questions up front on night two.
Right.
If you, if you did that, it would set some degree of precedent and also it would leave one citizen's petition hanging at the end, which is the senior housing on River Road West, if that's what you wanted to do, or move them all forward, but that's not typically how it's done.
Right. So I just wanted to bring that up to you guys and...
I think the citizen's petition should be at the end and we need to get the town business done first.
Well, hopefully, well, I mean, I know that we kind of targeted stopping at, what, 35, 34, 35 for the first night, but if we can go, go...
Was it 34 or 35?
I think so. I think I was going to lead off the second night with mine, so...
Start 34.
Yeah. But if we can keep, I mean, we don't have to stop, can we?
But you can't. You have to stop if you have two nights.
Yeah.
If you posted it as two nights, you must stop.
Yeah, you have to.
Yeah.
So the whole thing about the citizen's petition for the marijuana, I mean, we all read the finding by Attorney General Healy.
She's still, it's her choice if she wants to pass over or not. It's not ours.
It's actually not even because it's the citizens who signed it, so it's all of them collectively put down.
Oh, okay.
So even if she wanted to pull at this point, it still has to...
You can.
Do it at a town meeting, but not here.
Not here. Okay. All right. I think, yeah, I mean, either Mary or Lisa were saying that it's setting precedence. I don't want to set precedence.
Okay, then I will contact the seniors and the parents and let them know that it will most likely be, well, it will be, on the second night.
Yeah, at the end.
And we're not sure what time.
And the second night, other than the week chief stuff, I think, should be relatively And the second night, other than the week chief stuff, I think, should be relatively straightforward.
We should brush through.
We should get to those relatively early.
Hopefully early.
I don't, I mean, I suppose we could have drama about the snow removal bylaw, but it's a pretty reasonable request, so I don't know.
I don't think so.
I don't think it's gonna be, I guess, we'll see.
Then we'll know the violators.
Did we, did we, 'cause I know that FinCon, like, didn't approve the police video. Did we take that out?
It's just, was it taken out?
I don't know whether it was taken out or not, but sometimes people want to get up and pass over it, or because Capitol Planning put it off to the next year, just so that people do know that it's coming the next year.
It's not, it's not been taken off. It's Article 29 right now. With the clarification that the Finance Committee does not recommend it, zero to three. But if it's not withdrawn or passed over, then funding may raise and appropriate.
Might want to check with Chief Galvin just to see whether he wants to get up and say anything before he passes over it.
Or if he wants it off himself.
Right.
I thought Finance had talked to him about pulling it, but...
Again, I don't know what the outcome was though.
They made a recommendation, so when we were, Barry and I were kind of finishing this up, we put in every single recommendation, and since there was a recommendation there for it.
You put it in?
Right.
Well, why don't we see if they can get an answer, and we can just change that page if, and just wait to sign up.
Right. And the pilot agreement is in?
Back in.
Back in. However, it's just pretty much giving us the ability to negotiate the agreement.
And the earth...
It's not, it doesn't have the details in it right now.
And the earthwork things came out, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I stole one.
That's okay. Do you want to sign it?
Well, we have to wait for Mr. Galvin, don't we?
Or we can, I guess we can actually sign it and just set that page if we...
Right.
Okay.
It's not like it's...
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion to approve the warrant?
Okay, hold on.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here, let's see if we can all three sign all these.
Well, just one more note is, I have never put the funding sources right in with the article before, June.
Correct.
But Barry said, because the Finance Committee stated in their email, not just their votes, but also the funding sources, we're kind of boxing ourselves into these funding sources right now. That, Mary, may not be a problem, but then it really gives you no flexibility because it's going into the printed warrant.
In the past, they had like a little...
Like a grid chart.
Like a chart where they actually recommended where they were going to pull money from.
Okay, Chief Galvin's. Okay, they're coming out, the video.
Oh, okay.
Got this, yeah. I thought he was...
Well, the problem with by taking it out now is it re-numbers everything, ladies, so I'm not sure.
Can you strike through it, or do you have to literally take it out?
No, no, I can keep going. If you guys sign page 20, I'll make it fit so that it doesn't, that's fine. Yeah, everything's neatly on page 20.
All right.
June, what do you think about that? Do you think it's...
I don't know. You may want to just double-check with Finance where...
They're meeting Wednesday, and they're off the meeting the night before the meeting, and they might have a change of...
And where Scott and...
Those three, those two are complete.
Buzz is doing it.
This one, this one, this two. Yep.
Okay.
Well, I can still go in and...
This one good? Nope. One more.
Because usually, if they put it in their report, and I haven't seen their report yet...
Thought there were five. This one right on your...
Did you not get copied on their email even?
I didn't have a sticky though, so I...
You saw that?
Oh, there it is. It's on the inside.
They're actually, they're a recommendation, budget.
So, the FinCon meets on Wednesday. Do you want me to ask them, just to clarify, they're meeting on Wednesday, if they want to with, take out all the funding sources from their recommendations?
Technically, if you're gonna put in the funding source, then you don't need all the other words.
Raise, appropriate, borrow, transfer.
From available funds, all that stuff. Normally, you don't put in a funding source.
Into the motion. It's usually in the motion.
Because if we don't get the check in from mitigation funds, we can't use mitigation funds.
Did that come in yet? You had reached out. I thought I saw an email come through.
If it's in the motion, though, isn't that just as binding as it being in the...
No, because the motion isn't in the printed warrant. It's only, the motions are only stated for the first six articles. Otherwise, the motions, we generate right before town meeting. Actually, we'll do it sooner this year, but the point is, it's not part of, you don't get boxed in on that written document.
It's not normally printed.
Right. It's subject to change. Let's say Highland Commons money didn't come in.
Exactly.
Well, then you have to pull articles, I suppose, but... Cemetery receipts and all the different receipt accounts and all the different things.
Yeah, I would just confirm it with Finance.
I do think it's just for, it is helpful to know, even if it's not in there, if it's somewhere, it would be nice, because it's helpful to know.
Well, like I said, normally, they put it in that little chart where they recommend...
Was it a handout in the back of the room?
Or, or...
No, it's usually printed in their report.
Maybe it's in the...
It's usually like the first, one of the first pages of their report.
In their report, in the annual town report, okay.
Yeah.
Usually.
It's a new group.
And that's the whole thing, is they just may not realize that that's how they do it.
I sent it to them. I just didn't hear any feedback.
Yeah.
I'll leave it. I'll ask them. I mean, if they meet Wednesday, it just means that I just...
I'll have to send my email on go on Wednesday, so I can double-check with them.
You're going?
I think you guys, you guys have a meeting posted, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna run up.
But we just won't post this thing, then. We're just gonna sit on it.
And let us know what you hear back from the chief, too?
He said pull it.
He said pull it.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear you.
But I can, I can fix that.
Okay.
All right. All right, we have a flyer that Mary nicely did. Did you have a chance to look?
I just want to make sure that the information gets over to the annual town report committee, so that they can put it on the back of the warrant, too. At least the basic information.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, that was my only change, to take it from babysitting to childcare.
Right.
Yeah. The school had a couple of heads, too, that were fixed, but...
Well, I don't know. Do we, we don't need to take this one out, do we?
I was just asking if you want babysitting off there. It's here, too.
Oh, no, I don't care about that.
I can do that. I can, I'd have to redo that.
Yeah, no, no. I was just concerned about, because I actually didn't look over there. I looked here.
Okay.
Whichever. If you want me to redo it, I can redo that thing, too.
Yeah, I don't think that's a big deal. Looks nice.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
And thank you to Daniel Tussari and Jane Lobel.
So, then ask the principal if that can go home. Should I send it over there?
John Campbell, I think he has to approve it.
He does.
So, I can send it over to him?
Yeah.
And then we can print them for him here, because they'll be in color.
Right.
And they're supposed to be printing them out in color over there.
Oh, they probably can, but...
I don't think they normally print out, because that then costs them, but I think whoever's doing it prints out.
Yeah, because for the Easter stuff, we printed everything, and then Julie dropped it off.
Yeah. They don't do that piece.
It's more than likely, I'm guessing.
I'll get it counted.
Right. So, they're out next week, so we'll probably go home in the backpacks on the 26th, and that will give the parents a week to do that.
And I don't know that I'd send it over real early.
Don't send it over there at all yet?
No, no, I don't, I don't mind you sending it over to show them.
For approval.
For approval, but...
Don't send the prints over yet.
Yeah, because...
They may change.
Well, no, I think they probably, you know, things sit around, and then they get forgotten, or it's nice to just get them right before they need to send them out. Okay, so, we all agree this is fine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I had asked Mary to put the adjustment of the building inspector's FY '20 budget on because the FinCon had recommended a $500 cut to full-time salary or full-time wages. And whether we had a preference as to where that cut might come, since Joe is not here, and I don't know whether Richard feels comfortable making a decision like that.
So, can we just define what the difference is?
Well, the full-time salary would be Joe, or it would be...
The guy?
Uh, no. I think that's, full-time salary is just Joe. Full-time wages would be...
The other guy.
The additional local building inspector.
I'd vote for that one.
Agreed.
Okay. Do we need to change the budget and send it back to FinCon, Mary?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Normally, no, but...
Okay.
You want to definitely make sure Joe knows.
Yeah.
Because he can plan accordingly.
Okay.
So, it's not a surprise at the end of the year.
Do you want to change this for me, or do you want me to do it?
Do, so the map calculates to me?
Yeah.
I can. We just do pen and ink, usually.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to mark it up the way you...
Well, it would be out of full-time wages.
So, that's really only about, what, 12 hours?
Ish. Is it $15?
I think it's 40. It's 40 an hour?
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's minimal, in fact.
40,000, 494.
So, somewhere between 10 and 12 hours.
Do you want me to give...
Total for the year.
So, I'm gonna give that to you. So... Minimal impact. What are you looking at, an hour a week?
So, I'm coming up with 39, 994.
That's a lot, right?
Well, you could check my math.
Round it off.
Round up?
Yeah, round up.
Way up.
39, 994.
Oh, Patricia, just a heads up. We just approved a flyer for childcare, and the information needs to go in, on the back of the annual town report, so that people know.
Would you like some candy? Soften the blow a little bit, just asking. Maybe an egg? We can fill you in later.
There's childcare.
Oh, awesome.
Good to see you.
So, if we can get it on the back of the town report.
Oh, great.
On the back of the warrant, or on the back of the town report?
Yeah, so Chris was able to get the childcare, I'll bring in some water.
Oh, that's right.
Little bottles of water and some snacks.
Yeah.
So...
Oh, that's awesome. Both nights?
Both nights.
37, 494.
Just know what we're...
She called, and we're nice.
So, if I could take a break from town meeting, go over and get some snacks?
No, you cannot go over and get some snacks from the town meeting.
You'll have to have a stamp on your hand or something.
Mary usually brings some snack for us, so if you want to sit near the front.
No, that's the attorney.
Oh, oh, town council brings it in?
Yeah.
Thanks for the invite, but I like my seat.
And I would say today is the eighth.
So, every time we get up to announce an article, we get a cookie?
All right, there.
Treat.
All right, I did it on pegs. Sorry.
I'll bring my own food.
All right.
That works, yep.
Okay.
Cool.
All right. CMR, PC, wards dinner attendance. Who's planning to go?
It's all the way in June, isn't it?
Yeah, June, something.
I don't know when they wanted the numbers in, but...
End of May.
Oh, end of May? And we've already had two people from zoning board of appeals say they wanted to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm planning to go.
I could probably be convinced to go.
I think you should go.
Where is it? How's that? Is that convincing enough? Yeah, I was convincing enough.
Lisa?
I would have to wait. This is way too far in advance, too.
Okay.
Where was it?
Salem, Carson.
Salem, Carson.
Where's that?
Oh, it's really nice.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Down by Brookfield, the Brookfields.
It's Westbrook Field, right?
Yeah, it's one of the Brookfields. Very nice.
Does the flea market open then? No?
Not yet. I wasn't really paying attention, so when you were talking.
June something.
I don't think so.
Okay.
All right. Is that good enough?
No, that's, that's fine.
We'll wait till we get a final.
Few of us, so far, there's this many people coming.
Okay.
Okay. Next is scheduling town council, the KP Law presentation on social media and website posting. Does anybody have a preference?
Do we have a targeted audience? I mean, because whoever's coming, I want to make sure it's worth their while. I mean, the 40B one was good. It was a pretty packed room.
Yeah.
This would really be any committee, anybody who runs a Facebook page for town, anybody who posts on the town website. Actually, anybody who posts on Berlin Neighbors Connect needs to sort of hear.
Is it during the day or at night?
At night.
Like we did for ZBI. Like we did for the other one down the hall, when Amy came.
Do we want to do them this close together? I was just wondering. Or do we, should it be spaced out more?
Well, we gave Amy a couple of months' notice, I think, or at least a month's notice. So, if you wanted to push it out, we could do that.
It just don't want to be in the summer.
Sometime after mid-town meeting, hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah, after town meeting.
If it's not gonna be in summer, then are we looking at, like, September?
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'd rather vote for fall.
Do you know who does this presentation?
Lauren Goldberg did the one I saw.
Okay.
We both saw it. It definitely...
So, maybe she could...
Recommend some dates?
Recommend the date.
Yeah, I would say nothing after mid-June through August. People bail for the summer. They're not gonna want to come and sit here for a couple hours out of night.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
The executive recruitment. I can read the email I got today. It says, we, this is from Brian Duggan, who's doing our recruitment for MRI. We've received resumes from 24 candidates for the fire chief search. These resumes were received from candidates in seven states, including 17 from Massachusetts. Additionally, there were two candidates from Rhode Island, one each from Florida, New Hampshire, Maryland, Maine, and Missouri. Of these candidates, six have master's degrees, 11 candidates have bachelor's degrees, and three have associate's degrees. Their, the resumes are currently being ranked, and essay questions will be distributed to the top candidates. The essay responses will be reviewed by MRI team, and we will then begin our preliminary background work in preparation for our phone interviews. If you have any questions, contact Brian Duggan at MRI.
So, how many in New England? 17 in Mass, two in Rhode Island?
17 in Mass.
Yep.
Two from Rhode Island.
Mm-hmm.
And then one from each of the states that I mentioned.
Okay.
Here you go.
Oh, cool.
I don't have an update from Steve, MRI, I'm the town administrator, unless...
Yeah, he said something through. There's like 60.
He really did. Yep, there's like 60 candidates. They had a whole bunch of them come in.
Oh, okay, because that's what he said over the weekend, which is...
I was getting confused. I thought maybe that was the, at first, it was the, the fire chief search, but then I realized it was Steve.
Yeah, he said he had a boatload come through over the weekend, which is what he anticipated, that the best ones wait until the very end to play beat the clock.
Yeah.
I have it.
Okay.
A quick update on your search, which had a submittal deadline for prospective candidates at 8:00 AM today. Elizabeth from the MRI office has informed us, we had a significant rush over the weekend. We always tell our clients, the serious candidates wait till the last weekend to submit. This is now posting all the last-minute arrivals, and it looks like you will end up with over 60 responses. That is a great number for your community. Steve and I will be evaluating and scoring these individuals over the next few days. We are pleased with this response, and we'll be in touch sometime over the next week or so.
Good. Nice. Good. Nice.
Which... Now, one of them was a date of the 8th, and one is the 10th?
No, they're both closed. One was the 8th.
Oh, the 5th. Okay.
So, both are closed.
The fire was 5th and the 2nd was the 8th.
Oh, here it is. Mary had it right here.
Yep.
Okay. There's another one for you, if you want it. So, we're down to other new business. Going, going, gone.
Egg stuff on Wednesday.
Old business. I had forgotten to read my old business last time, if I can find it. It was the... The last admin meeting I went to at Nishoba MBRDD, the dispatch district. And it may not mean a lot to people. This is my scribble notes. Marie Sabovaro was voted vice chair of the admin board. Jessica Strunkin is a new Devens member to the admin board. There was approximately, and this is like a week ago, approximately $81,000 in our account with additional fourth-quarter assessments, which is an additional $81,000. The balance will be 16,200. No. No, 162,000. Got the comma in the wrong place. The audit, Jim Powers from Powers &amp; Sullivan will be giving a presentation at the April meeting. One of his suggestions is to appoint a treasurer and a bookkeeper who is an independent contractor. We're hoping to use the development grant to consolidate radio channels from 17 to 4. One North Fire, one South Fire, one North Police, one South Police. And it would be Fire and EMS. And then we did an executive session, the negotiations. Subcommittee gave an update on the dispatcher's contract, which I think we're close to agreeing on.
Cool.
So, that's it.
And then next week, we meet Tuesday. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Tax Day. Well...
So, there's no other new business?
Seconded.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.